Let's get what sixty more minutes, so that'll help. That'll all be down here tomorrow. Scott from Queens, my office there.
All right.
Some call meeting or roll call?
Mayor Westgar?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
And welcome Lois, do you want to get up and tell us what you... The council can take no action, but we'd like to hear it.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lois Smith, and thank you for the opportunity to approach the city council. I would like to propose a placement of the Christmas tree in the center of the intersection of Forest Street and Main Street to bring back the tradition of the lighted Christmas tree. I would propose the Christmas tree be placed there, starting from the first of December through the first of January. From my research, I found in the past, the lighted Christmas tree was in the center of Main Street until around nineteen sixty-nine. There, the tree was put up by city employees. This was the highlight for the town that brought many people from afar to admire the tree. I spoke to numerous Lakeview residents who would like to see this wonderful tradition brought back. Many of them still have fond memories of the beautiful tree and the carolers who sang by the tree. A local resident has authored to donate the tree, the lights for the tree. There is a Christmas tree farm located in a nearby community, which I will approach about donating a tree. Some concerns may include the snow removal during this time. With a fifteen-foot tree, there will be approximate clearance of thirteen point five path to get around the tree. This will depend on the size of the tree and its branches, and that goes with your thirty-three, minus the six-foot base, is twenty-seven divided in half is your thirteen point five to get around the tree. Another concern is how will it be anchored? I've spoken to two local people who can fabricate a base for the tree to secure it. They have some great ideas on how to anchor the tree. The lighting of the Christmas tree can be supplied from the electrical outlets and the nearby bump outs. I welcome input from the city as to the best and safest way to accomplish this. My proposal is that we hold the tree lighting ceremony on December first at six thirty P M. I feel this would be a great asset for the community and business owners. Thank you, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you Lois, that was very good. I guess the agenda, we can take action if the council chooses to do something.
I mean, I must say that it is...
How tall was the tree again?
Fifteen foot.
And you don't really know for sure, though, how wide it is.
On a fifteen-foot tree, according to Stacy Ryan, it's a six-foot base. And that's with the branches and everything.
That's if we get fifteen.
Yeah, if we get a fifteen-foot tree. It could be lower, it could be twelve, it could be ten. In the past, it was twenty-five foot.
So how would you propose running electricity to it? I mean, would you plug it in going across the street? Or I guess I'm trying to figure out how you would run electricity to it.
So the electricity, once it's in the middle there, you can either run it up and go around the pole and come down to the bump outs, or we could make something, again, working with the city workers to see what the safest way would be, so that the snow removal would not scoop up the wire. You know, in the past, they've had the wire come up and down, and they wrap lights around it, so it didn't look so, you know, when they did hang the wire there. Because they used to have wires on it, going out to all four corners, so they wrapped the lights around it. So I can work with the city workers to see which way would be best for them, and the route for the snow removal, and we can put it there. I'm sure you can't put tape on the road, but at least we can think of some way to get to the bump out, either it's up, around the pole, and down.
Hey, I'm sure we would only look at an aerial system.
Yeah, right.
I don't think so.
So, my other question is that, your goal is to create the atmosphere again, to have everybody come down, go into the Christmas tree, see the Christmas trees up there. Would that be something that would work in the farmer's market?
Well, the only thing I was thinking about the farmer's market, you have the fence there, which I think it would cause more of a, you know, with people stopping right there, and you have the vehicles all parked this way, you won't be able to actually really see into the farmer's market, unless you went around the backside to the bar. I'm trying to get it to where it traditionally was, in the center of the town, and so that, you know, anybody who would like, any church groups who would like to sing, you know, it's there where people can walk down into the businesses and see what's happening, if somebody wants to display something outside their store, you know, that people who are coming to look at the tree can also go to maybe the wooden or, or the Pam's store, or, you know.
Would we have something, again, like we did with Halloween, Christmas bump outs, you know how they're...
Decorated.
Decorated, would that tie in with something like that?
Um, you know, I don't know if that's happening, or not, they did that last year, I don't know if it's in the horse stadium.
It's up, it's up in the area still, whether we're gonna do it.
I think last year, we just, it was a voluntary thing, there was no prizes, just, you know, but people did do some.
They did do some, but I talked to a few people that really don't want to do it again, because it was difficult, because it was so cold, and trying to secure it, the snow...
The wind, yeah.
The wind.
It was nice, though.
So do we decorate the trees we have in our bump outs then? Do we...
No, we have not.
I would like to have white lights on all year long, I'm just saying.
I agree with you, Vicky.
I'm not against this, although I think that Bill should be a part of this decision.
Yeah, and I guess I would tell you that, that we need to consult with Bill on this. Bill is on vacation all of this upcoming week, also he's out of state, so, you know, we'd like to have some consultation with him. I know there are some, some concerns, you know, there's traffic concerns, and there's concerns about putting anything in the middle of the street, you know, it becomes some liability issue. You know, it's a true statement that it used to be done a long time ago, in a lot of places, and it's not anymore.
Why, why did it, why did you stop doing it?
You know, I don't even remember it being...
Was there a reason?
Yeah.
John, do you know?
I, I don't know, but, but I do know that when they quit doing it here, in this... Here. Then they did it at the north end of the street, on that, there was a vacant lot up there, which there's, which I think Laney has some cars parked there now, but that's where they put it then, you know, after a while.
I think it probably, I'm guessing it got to be an issue having it in the middle of the street.
I don't, I don't know, you know, I was a, I was just a...
And we have less room than we used to.
I was just a two-year-old probably at that time.
Yeah, sure.
Why did I have a real young man?
I can barely remember that. Brita, Brita had it also, at that time, and one of the things that they had, there was vandalism at night, they were busting out the lights, you know, how they, and, but they had it for years too, and they had the lights strung across the top of the, on Main Street, you know, they did a lot of work on that part, but it...
Always had one too, by the grocery store there.
Well, I think, you know, the thing is, that we used to have the poles downtown, which the lights are easier to run from, probably too.
It's gonna be harder to get them to the poles.
But, but...
At the bump outs, there's not as much street space as there used to be.
But they did, and I, I wonder too, if it wasn't stealing the bulbs, or, or what, but you know, kids are a lot nicer than they were then, probably too.
Probably.
But anyway, I think they, I think you'll, I think in the early sixties, it was standard, but I think, you know, like in the late sixties, I think they may have moved it to the north end, you know, and you know, I think there's, I think it's a great idea, I don't know, what's, you know, even, even like in front of the, you were misliving here, you know, you know, I mean...
Yeah, I've thought about that too, as far as issues of providing power and stuff to farmer's market, or even out here in front of City Hall, are a lot easier to handle.
Because you're, you're planning on the city workers doing this, is that the lighting? Is that what you're planning? Well, either one would avoid the issue of it being in the middle of the street, as far as snow, snow would go. Either one of those other locations.
Well, when they used to do the trees in City Hall, they were really pretty, and I really hated it when they stopped doing it, so I'm, I'm in favor of doing something here. I would like to see it, instead of December first, I'd like to see it tied in with Community Club's Christmas, which is the first Saturday, I believe, or second Saturday.
Yeah, this year, maybe like the, it's the eighth or ninth, whatever that's...
A little later. I just think it could tie in very nicely.
I think it's fourteen this year.
Well, what if we find out from Bill what he can and cannot do, if it's, if he doesn't want to do it downtown because of several issues? If we put it here or farmer's market, would that be all right?
Probably in front of the municipal building would be nice.
I think that'd be more appropriate.
Yeah, well, it's, it's very central location.
I think it'll look better.
Like you get a bigger tree that way.
I like it.
Yeah.
That's, that, that would be fine, that's what we'll, we could even apply it on.
So can we have it, have it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, so we'll have a council meeting on November fifth.
What I would like to, what I'd like to see...
And Bill will be back.
What I'd like to see, do, why don't you run across the city, once we're lighting all the trees on the Main Street, with a white light, that we could have here around? I'm just thinking, if, if this doesn't work, we could unify downtown by putting lights in the tree.
Lights in the other trees besides.
At the bump outs, instead, think about that, I mean, we gotta see if this is feasible, but I mean, next best thing was, you know...
I'd like that ball.
I would too. But I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying, yes, if the other doesn't work, why?
If you use LED bulbs, you know, they're pretty bright, and they're less on electricity, and you could actually get LEDs that, you know, can change lights on itself, so...
Kids can't unscrew them, LEDs are unshrewn.
No, they can't.
I'm sure, that's what I think.
Each one of those trees that are in those bump outs, you know.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think that would be a easy...
Start a program, so...
Years ago, Community Club, when they were smaller...
Right.
Community Club used to decorate those trees.
And they looked really pretty.
See, I'd like to see those lit, but I'd also like to see them on the bike path way.
They could be...
I know, but it's so pretty when everything's like lit up, and you're going down around that lakerie, and you look over and you see that path, it's pretty. Can't you just see that? Come on, imagine it.
We'll get some prices put together, we'll have them on the vice council on Thursday, okay? And we'll have price on the council, we'll know what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
You have somebody that'll fabricate a stand, though?
I had talked to Phillips Manufacturing to Bruce Allen, and he came up with several, you know, good ideas for that, and Mark Stansberry, he also had come up with some ideas for it too, so...
And do you have the cost for those, or your...
Well, Bruce said that Brian was out, and he would let me know what the cost on that, and then Mark's supposed to visit with me tomorrow, and tell me what it would approximately cost for that. But you did have someone that would donate the lights for the tree? Linda Droner said she would.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
I think you get businesses behind it too.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a win-win for the city.
I do too.
We'll bring back Merry Christmas instead of Happy Holidays.
Yeah, it should be Merry Christmas.
It should be Merry Christmas, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna pull the closed session, you have that motion?
You know, make that motion?
Second thing, roll call.
Yes.
I know that someone was...
Yes, yes.
So...
She's still got that leap off situation in her brain. Yeah. She's talking about my house. I don't have any bad luck.
Are you gonna shut the camera off now?
We're gonna shut the camera off.
Oh, no, he wants a picture. Okay.
Hi.
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 Hold on, you said, you shut it off?
No, I'm going to.
I'm gonna beat you with a wet noodle.
Probably most of grounds.
That's okay.
Where I was in there.
A little, little chewy.
I have an updated version. Oh, all right. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, guys, I do.
Sorry, you had to wait.
Oh, that's all right.
Scott's office is entertaining.
There aren't much to see. Well, Scott said you guys have these copies, but I got, there's an up, well, there's not really updates to the floor plan, but I got updates to, I have a price list on the back of every one.
Oh, great.
We've been spending a little time doing that kind of stuff. My name is... Hi, Terry.
Terry.
Nate is not here, so... Terrific, thanks, sir.
So, I'm not sure, I know that Vicky and John and Scott, we moved it through things in detail, with Regent Twelve, as far as what the plan was and everything like that, and so I just went ahead and on the back, we went, broke everything down. These are actual prices, I mean, la, or the materials list is accurate, down to the nail. The labor, I, these are quotes, bids from contractors, plumbers, stuff like that. Everybody was erring on the higher side when they did their bids, I mean, they told me that straight up, you know, because they were kind of nervous about how it worked with the grant situation, you know, as far as, you know, work order change, stuff like that, so they're like, well, I wanna cover my butt. So this, I mean, the overall cost, I think, is, I don't think it'll be quite that, I don't know, I mean, I'm prepared for that, but I mean, we don't think it'll be quite that. And everything kind of runs together, there are certain parts of this that can be removed from it, that's why we broke it down, so, you know, based on priority, the apartment would be the number one thing, which is the largest cost. Well, along with the apartment, would go the siding, when the, or the siding on the sides in the back, because of cutting in windows, you're gonna have to do something with the facade, the stairs below that, you gotta have that to get up to the apartments. You get into the gym, hallway, and resort, those are areas that can be cut from it, if needed. I mean, you know, if we decide, you know, get into a can of worms, I don't want to have to do that, but that's why we broke it down. The resort especially, is kind of the second, second thing that I kind of want to concentrate on, it needs the most work, with maybe the potential of a different business in there, that at some point, I mean, we talked a little bit about that, not that I want to run them off, but at the same time, it's a lot of wasted space, so...
It is.
Right. So, that's what I've been busy with, getting all that stuff taken care of, and just kind of trying to get, kind of get an idea of what exactly it is that we're in for, if this thing proceeds.
You bet. So, a couple folks have not, you know, heard all the plans and everything, can you just...
You bet, okay.
You know, the full...
Well, if you start on the front page, and you, this is obviously the front of the building, what you'll see there is, the plan is, is the storefront, we're gonna replace the windows, walk-in doors on the resort and the, on the salon. They're getting bad, they're gonna get boxed in, a little bit smaller than what they are by about two inches all the way around, because there isn't a lot of structure holding that up, so we're gonna make a frame to kind of hold everything up. The gray that you see in the middle there, that's ephes, it's a stone-like material that they basically spray on and form it, it gives the appearance of a, of a stonework through there, and that's gonna be done around all the windows, the mid portion of the building and the top, that price is figured in, and, and then the tops story will have lap siding to give it a little bit more of a rustic feel, I guess, is kind of what we decided, because vinyl siding was, I don't know, it's kind of, we're gonna do vinyl on the sides and on the back, but for the Main Street, we wanted something that kind of stood out more than just regular old siding.
Yeah.
So, and the second page is just a different view, but then if you flip over to the third page, you can see this is the back of the building, and this is gonna be the main entrance into the upstairs apartment area, and that's the stairwell that we'll build, along with a little bit of an awning, and then, we're gonna pave the, the void there between the chiropractor and the fitness center, that's kind of rock and full of utilities, and it looks bad, we're gonna pour that into concrete, and then replace the, or hopefully pour everything in front of the fitness center at the same time, and replace the window, back window of the fitness center, it's getting kind of bad. And then, yeah, and then the next page is just the floor plan for the apartment, down to, this is what we've been getting all of our main bids off of, is this drawing, and, well, for the apartment, and then people have been coming up and looking at the upstairs, and I think we've done about a hundred tours in the last month.
That'd be brutal.
It's, everybody was...
I saw the Facebook post, and I was shocked at, right away.
Oh, yeah.
Really.
Everybody wants to see what it looks like, and, you know, I, I've emailed these plans to contractors...
People will think that they took something when they walked down, so that would help us a little bit.
Should be like, tell them to write, charge ten bucks to give it to them.
I know, that's... Yeah, bring them through, I know.
I was just happy people could do stuff with it.
And everybody was intrigued, you know, and they come up and look, and see what's up there, and the electricians, the plumbers, stuff like that, when we bring them up, you know, it's, right away, it's the same thing, oh geez, this is a, this is a mess. And then I said, well, let's break it down here, you know, and look it over, and then we look at the plans, and then it's a little better. Now, the next page is the floor plan for the resort, and the way that we did this, let's, yeah, so the resort is on the left, where we got all the dimensions on there, and we've got it, this is how it sits existing, and when we did the bid on the resort for the labor and materials and everything, we did it for existing, with preparation that we could maybe make a small office in the back, and when, doing so, we'd have to move the bathroom. We thought about making a common bathroom between two, I guess, my point being, is we were, our attempt was to try to make two businesses out of one there, since the resort really doesn't need a storefront, rather than just telling them to get lost, we could, you know, still utilize them in the back, and then still free up the space in the front. And that's what you're gonna see, that, that wall there, where it's got the two doors that swing out, that would be the cutoff point there, ish, I mean, depending on, we could move that, it's not, it's not a load-bearing wall, and we talked about, I talked at the lumberyard about the potential of just putting another bathroom in, and we may do that, because, you know, by the time you move a bathroom to make it a common bathroom, well, you're putting one in anyway, so why not just leave the old one, and who wants to share a bathroom anyhow, so... So, and that was their big plan right away, because they said, well, then you can have closet space in that old bathroom, well, probably true, but I don't know, I guess...
So, so let me understand this, this twenty-eight-six is the resort...
That's the store.
That'd be the new retail?
Uh, actually, it would go a little bit further back than that. We would be using the, the next wall, where it's fourteen foot, we, somewhere in there, and if we think it might be getting a little snug on, we can move that wall up. We're trying to kind of give the retail as much space as possible in doing so, and the twenty-eight-six, this is how it's set up right now, it's actually set up into these three built, or rooms, and that's what he drew it up, we did the bidding on for that, just so the contractors kind of had an idea of what we were in for.
So, so right now, there's the, the twenty-eight-six is where the resort is?
Yeah.
And there's two rooms behind them there?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, they use, they store some stuff in there.
It's their rooms, I mean, they're just...
I know they bag and stuff back there.
They're about as empty as the front, to be honest with you, I mean, I was in there the other day, and I haven't been in there much since we bought the building, but I was in there the other day, and I was looking at it and talking to Penny, and I'm like, why, I mean, there's just tons of wasted space in here.
And I don't even know if they bag there anymore.
I don't know if they do or not either.
And so then this behind there, Nate?
That's...
Where you're proposing that you might be able to fit them back there?
Well, that's what I'm hoping, or dabbling in, yes, and I talked to Craig when we were drawing this up, and I think the thirteen foot's a little small, I'd feel better about giving them a twenty-foot space, which would kind of turn in the store retail into a thirty-five foot space, and still have a wall, you know, we're still gonna need a wall that separates the storefront, so they, so that the new retail would have a back, you know, they gotta have some back room to keep their stuff and all that, and that's why, so we kind of have flexibility there, and when we got the bid on it, we can, I mean, they're bidding the walls as they are, so if we gotta move one wall five foot or whatever, it's, that part's not a big deal, I mean, it's covered anyways. But, yeah, that's kind of what our plan is on that, our tentative plan anyways, so... And once we started adding everything up, I have to admit, the prices start to... Get your attention, huh? Well, I mean, it's not, doesn't scare you so much, is, you know, it's pretty easy to look at a space and say, oh, we should throw some apartments up there, you know, a couple walls, throw some outlets in, you know, and away we go, well, that, I mean, once you really break it down and get an idea of what you're in for, you know, and this here, I mean, everything that we have bid, the flooring is all bid installed, ever, I mean, this, there's different parts of it, this is the entire cost, the ephes has been installed, I've looking at different ways to cut different costs, one of the ones is using like Denison drywall, now, all the contractors that I've got are all local, and, you know, they're bidding the whole project, drywall and everything, well, I've contact, I talked to the one guy, and I said, what do you think about subbing out the sheet rock work, you know, that's very time-consuming, they can get on to the other stuff, and them guys down in Denison can walk in, and seven days later, it's done. And they're quick, and they're pretty, I mean, as far as it goes, pretty inexpensive. So that's an avenue, I mean, I wanted to bid it this way first, but, you know, that's just an avenue that there could be a cost savings if needed to be. And they also do the ephes, and right now, the ephes is bid through triple C out of Vale, and there's not a lot of people that do ephes, I found out, or even, that even know what it is. I didn't really know what it was until we dug into this, and I brought, got brought to my attention, but, so, I mean, other than that, and like on the plumbing and electrical, all that was bid with furnace units, well, they bid them with the hotel-style units, I think we were talking about it that day when Carla was here, and they went ahead and bid it with those, and, I mean, that's out the gate, you know, that's, the electricals, little boxes for each unit, outlets, switches, wire, the whole shebang, that gets us there for everything.
So, there's a, what, three, two bedroom, or three, one bedroom?
Uh, well, in that drawing, you got two one-bedroom, and then the back one is the two-bedroom. That's, they're smaller two-bedroom apartments, and if you look at the page, I'm not sure how it got stapled on there, but there's two apartments side by side, and that's the back of the building, would be just beyond that, I don't know how, I think I stapled them all the same way. But yeah, so it's just the two-bedroom is the one that's gonna be on the city side, or the street side, yes, yep. And that can be changed too, I mean, we just thought that was kind of a nice, a nice touch, you know, to have a two-bedroom instead of a one, if needed, and that's the one with the most windows, or...
I was just wondering.
Yep. So other than that, I mean, we've been, we kind of, I feel confident that we've got all of our ducks in a row on this deal anyways, I don't know.
So you furnish all of your appliances and everything?
Yeah, the way we've gotten bid right now, fridge, stove, water heater, stackable washer and dryer, and every unit. And the, one of the main reasons for that was, with the floor plan that we had, we didn't have an area for laundry room, I mean, and I didn't want to put anything downstairs, for one, we don't really have a space downstairs for it, and who wants to carry clothes up and down steps to try to do that?
I mean, we have a coin out there.
Right, right.
In our, in our washing dryer.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, if I would have more space upstairs, I would have probably...
The reason I don't have it upstairs is because of, you know, I would suggest putting my hands under the chains.
Right, right.
Just so you don't ruin your ceilings.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true. So that's how they got, that's how that's all kind of bid out, I don't know.
So do you have enough room for parking?
Well, in the back there, as you can see where we got paved, I think we got, between the fitness center and the back of the building there, you know, we should easily be able to get two or three vehicles, well, three vehicles back there, and they could always, you know, be around the corner, I suppose, over, you know, by Wicker's building, if needed. And you know what, I mean, they could park in the front, I guess, if, if had to be.
It ain't the snow.
Right.
It's only down the up.
Yeah.
Right.
But the only access to the upstairs apartments is this outside.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the back now.
There'll be no, no way you can do a stairway inside.
We gotta have two, don't you?
No, I have egress windows on everything, so I talked to the fire marshals and insurance companies, and I got all that covered with them, and... Because before we drew this up, I was planning on having two entrances on everything, and Cause before we drew this up, I was planning on having two entrances on everything, and after I got ahold of them.
About everything, but I, just to make, you know, one on the front, one on the back.
Right, right, and I guess the egress windows count for that, is what they're told me, cause we talked to, uh, we talked to our insurance companies and. Talked to, uh, well, Jimmy Garles a little bit, you know, I brought him up there, we walked through, I just said, one of his thoughts on how it was gonna be with the fire, fire stuff and. Yeah, that was.
I just wondered about the weather and they, they look quite steep. Um, because they're not that steep on the inside, I mean, they, they're steep, but.
Right, right, you mean the, the stairwell?
The outside stairs.
Yeah, well, there's two landings and.
Yeah, there's a couple of landings in there, though, that helps.
Yeah.
Oh, but I mean, that's quite a.
Right, well, I mean, um, yeah.
Comes out a long ways, I guess, is what.
Yeah, and I can't remember what the spec is on steps, it's gotta be, like, the pad's gotta be eleven inches and seven or some, I can't, I know, I have it wrote down at home. But that's what we expected too, is that whatever they require for that. And, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, as far as the weather and stuff goes, it's probably. Probably going to have be something that's gonna have to keep clean, but we can always put, we talked about that too with the lumberyard, those. Like sticky tread pads on there or something like that, kinda help alleviate some of that if need be, so.
The other thing that I wondered about looking at this is, um. You know, if, if we're, if we are gonna pick your building for this catalyst grant. Is this facade going to?
I think we'll want, we will want to have some discussion with the grant folks. You know, they're, they're, uh, they will always kinda skew towards historic renovation. And wanna get their feelings about EFS.
Right.
And know what they, what they think about that.
Right, right, you know, yeah.
And the siding too. I mean, the type of siding.
The lap siding that's up there.
Yeah, it is, um, certainly, I would not call that a historic renovation look.
If you can actually use metal.
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, what's under there now is asphalt shingles, basically, um. I'm not sure how, I don't, I mean, I don't have any pictures of what you was there, you know.
What it looked, used to look like, I did talk to someone this morning about that a little bit, and of course, they were confused, thinking I was talking about Hussey's building. Well, they're like, oh yeah, we got pictures, and I'm like, no, I'm talking about, um, the other ones, so.
Right.
I said, go see if you got any pictures, but as far as, I mean, I don't really care, this looks very nice, I just wanna make sure that we. So, try to get that hundred thousand grant, you know.
So I, I have a price on this EFS, you can do the entire outside of the building, which was the original plan. And it'll give it more of a stucco look, I mean, it's not gonna be brick, you know, like, which I don't think, I know it was never brick anyways, but. It'll, it's more of like a, a nice stucco look, it adds about nineteen thousand dollars to the project, that's kinda why. I mean, that was a lot of the reason why we switched it out, um, if we can.
But the thing is, is that if you didn't get the grant.
Yeah, right, no, absolutely.
You could almost have two.
Yep, and.
Two proposals, couldn't you, I mean, I mean, you could have two plans, and well, if this doesn't, if we don't get the grant, then we're not gonna do that.
Sure.
Particular, more expensive.
And I know when I was going through the, the grant papers that you handed out that time, they have a checklist with a point system. And that's kinda when we were going through everything, you know, and historic look, um, you know, I guess it's just anybody's opinion on historic. When you can't really.
Right.
You know, bring it back to.
Right.
What it was.
They would talk about windows and stuff, though, would, you have anything in mind about specifically what you're doing for windows?
Well, uh, on the outside, you mean, the street side?
Yeah.
Well, it's just gonna be those, you know, the square windows with the, the arch style.
The arch style.
You know, stone, when you're standing on the ground and you look at this EFS, you're not gonna know that it's not stone. There's a building in Wall Lake, and I stood right there and looked at it, and I mean, it looks like they come in and they pour, you know, the ledge and everything right around it. And that was what was so intriguing to me, because it just, you know, it's nice, it's very nice.
What you'd have around the windows too?
Yep, yep, all that gray that you can see on the front, that's around all the windows, every one of them, that top ledge. It'll be all the way across there, and then the middle, to kinda separate, it'll be across that as well. And then that's also what we'll be doing to fill in the void on the storefront. Because like I said, we're gonna make those windows slightly smaller than what they are now, and so. What's that?
Where the quiet protector window is.
Uh, no, you mean, no, you mean that size? No, no, I'm talking, our salon windows are gonna be about two inches around smaller. That's it, the only reason we're doing that is because there's no structure in that glass to hold the building up. So all we're doing is we're just taking two by fours and building a frame around it, that way we have something more solid. So, that stone, or that EFS that'll go around there, you know, it'll basically, you know, just fill in that void on the outside. I wanna keep as much storefront as possible, you know, as far as the glass. What's that?
I like that bigger window in there.
I do too, I think it looks sharper.
For a storefront, you, you almost need something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great place to just.
And when we had the contractor look at it, I had to agree with them, you know, we, we needed to get, we need to get some framing in there. Um, there's a pole in between the two windows right now, and it's a load bearing pole. That's about all it is, and, you know, it's, it was one of them where I'm like, if we're gonna do this thing, we need to make sure that the building's structurally sound and. I'd hate to skip something simple like that, and, you know, it gives us room for more of that, you know, stone looking EFS stuff too, which I think is gonna. You know, stand it out and make it look a little more sharp as well.
And isn't Carla, is, was she the one that told us that, that's what they, she helped with it?
Yes, Carla, they did that building on Main Street in Wall Lake.
That's the bank and the.
Yeah, I think it's right there, it's the west, west side, is it west side bank?
And that does look really nice.
It does, and that's kinda where this idea even stemmed from on everything, cause, um, you know, as far as, you know, bringing in like they, I don't even know. I couldn't even tell you who would do actual stone, you know, like some of the buildings were. But there is that option, I mean, like I said, that stucco look, which you give it like a masonry look on the top. We did price that, I mean, I'm not saying, like you said, I'm not saying it was out, I was just kinda trying to, you know. In, in doing this, you know, you can spend as much as you want, you know, basically, I was just trying to, to make it kinda.
Well, and if you get a hundred thousand and you don't, that's a big.
Sure.
That's a big thing, big factor.
You know, and I mean, yeah, you know, that, that's where a lot of it plays in, and that's where a lot of this, you know. This plan kinda came a lot from the catalyst handout that you had, you know, you gotta look down, start going through, you know, what they're after. And just kinda play it from there, and I think we have a lot of the key factors in here, and it's not, I mean. It's a big renovation, but it's not like you're taking on, you know, from scratch, you know, and the good part is, you don't. Like I said, I mean, there's, it, it adds to everything, I mean, you're gonna have your second story housing. You know, your facade will be better, it'll give you the opportunity for a potential for a new built, or business in the downstairs. I mean, I think it's got everything that that grant's looking for myself, I mean, plus it's got a good structure to start with and. We don't have to, we can kinda do it, I, I mean, as far as the timeline goes, I don't think it'll take terribly long to do it, as long as. Contractors pulled up.
But it's, as far as any basement underneath the building?
Yes.
So what do, what do you have for basements underneath?
There's a basement underneath the salon, and then there's a basement underneath the fitness center and the resort, and they have shared stairwells down there. There, uh, the salon basement's in the best shape by far, we got the tanning bed down there, I don't know if anybody's been down there to look at that. Uh, the shorter ceilings, the fitness center and the resort area, I mean, they're more of a utility style basement. I mean, you could, that's where the furnaces are, I mean, I suppose you could clean them up and stuff, um, I'm not sure. You know, how would, well, you'd be able to utilize the space too much on some of that, but. They're, but they're there, I mean, there's a lot of square footage of basement under there, they left us a whole mound of stuff in the one too, which was, that's all the wood that's ceiling.
Just a whole huge pilot, pilot sized room of just wood.
Yeah.
To the ceiling?
Oh, yeah.
To the ceiling.
I wonder if that guy, I should contact that guy at Deloitte, I wonder if you might be interested in some of that. Cause you haven't come across anybody that's interested in purchasing any of it.
Of the wood?
Yeah.
No, everybody wants stuff for free.
Yeah, and I kinda was like, and they were just pinkish projects, so it wasn't anything coming in and get one and get some. Yeah, it was just like, oh, a piece of wood here.
Little bit.
We bought the building on the other side, we held seventeen pickup loads out of that basement.
Is that right? I believe it.
Yeah, we try not to let, put too much in the basement.
We do have restaurant sinks down there though, that I, I did talk to Emily Bog about maybe taking those for her, I don't know if she.
You gotta walk in cooler too.
Oh, yeah.
That works, I guess, but, that's in the resort office, usually it has a closet. I don't know if that must have been from, was it subs and stuff?
Subs was there.
Yeah, yeah.
Pizza place.
As we think about this grant application, though, even as it pertains to the basement, we wanna incorporate that somehow.
Sure.
Even if it's just ever saying, we're gonna clean it out and it'll be available space.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Available for their, their storage for those renters, you know, maybe, maybe they've got an extra bicycle they wanna put down there when they're not using it, you know, that kinda thing.
Yeah, that's a good idea, especially, yeah.
Just storage for it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody have their own little locker there.
Just have something down there with a little.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that, that's a great idea.
A lot, like in your senior citizen apartments, they'll have a, a room, you know, and you've got a little.
Right, yeah, and I mean, most of the spaces down there, it's all dry, I mean, most importantly.
You gotta incorporate it into the plan, at least it might help the grant out.
Right.
See if we get that far.
Right, right.
Carry it down there and set it in.
They're just people that, you know, they need some type of storage.
Yes.
And you don't always get it in an apartment, so if you have something that's allotted to each one of them.
Yeah, that's one, that's a detail I didn't, I kinda overlooked on that, yeah, I mean, it's onsite storage at least.
Right.
You might have to go downstairs, you know, or whatever, but at least it's there.
Go to a storage unit anyway.
And we plan to keep that hallway open, no, no matter what happens with the project, so like with the people, the renters. I mean, if they do park out front, they're gonna have a conditioned space to at least walk, you know, the majority of their trip through. I know it's not a big deal, but at least they, you know, if we do have a parking issue, they still have that option.
Stuff stay in there that go upstairs or no?
No, those ones are gonna be cut out, they're gonna have to go out and around, but, um, you know, it's there, I mean, they'll be about ten feet or. Four, four, fifteen feet, I guess, but I guess my point being, I mean, it's there, so. And we got all the renovation for the hallway all written on there too, and, um. And these all include, those prices include demolition with everything also. And there's another thing, you know, I kinda feel like we could handle some of that when it comes down to it as far as tearing out and stuff, but. I had everybody bid it, just, they're gonna walk in, tear everything out, and put everything back up to the plan, so.
If you, if, if we, if we do pick your building for this catalyst grant. You can't do any kind of, I mean, they, you can get rid of the junk, that's about it, right?
You can't do the tear down, it has to be licensed contractors for everything.
Or you can't do anything until you're awarded.
Right.
That's the biggest thing to do until you're awarded.
Right, and I kinda suspected that, on that, you know, um.
Which is what, April, April of nineteen?
Oh, that's when they order?
Yeah.
If you don't get the grant, are you going to go ahead with it then?
Probably not, I mean, I, I can't see it. I can't, I don't know that I was, if I could see a pencil in out very well, I mean, without that, you know, it lets two hundred and thirty thousand. If I got four hundred dollars a unit, you know, I don't know, you know better than I do what they're worth, uh, you know, that'd be twelve hundred bucks. I don't, I don't know.
But would, but if the city could help with other grants or stuff like that.
I'd consider it.
One then, would you consider?
I mean, I would consider it, depending on where we were at with that, you know.
Cause I'm sure we could find you.
Right.
Some more funding, I, it might not be a hundred grand, but I think we could do a considerable.
Right.
But even just to do, you know, parts of it at a time or something.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I would, for sure would break it down, you know, and I mean, the first thing that I'm gonna do is whatever generates revenue. You know, I'm, and that's gonna be the apartment, you know, so the facade would sit for a while. Um, then, you know, go from there, if, if it was to happen, I mean. I don't know, I mean, I guess I haven't thought about that, we're just, as far as, you know, I've given it some thought, but I mean, I probably won't do anything. Without some assistance of some kind.
Right.
At least, so, and I know when we were talking to Carla a little bit, uh, when we met with her, you know, she went to a meeting after our meeting. And found out what was gonna be available for grants, is that right? That's, I think that's what she.
Another one she was talking about, with the CDVG stuff.
Yeah, she was gonna find out, and then she was bringing up the possibility of like layering grants and stuff like that, which, you know.
And they have like trust fund, the way Scott explained it to me, is like each apartment, you get so much money for that, you know.
Right.
We have a little bit of money the city can invest in, um.
Right, to go from there.
Yeah, you know, the, the city will have to be a financial partner in the project in order to put forth a good looking grant application, so, you know, that would, that would be.
So, let me ask you as a city here, uh, let's say one of your applicants takes on four oh eight main. They get into it, I mean, I know what mine's gonna cost, I can't imagine what that building's gonna cost. What are you gonna, what happens if you get, you know, three fourths of the way in there and the funds run out? I mean, how does that work? I mean.
Does it sell it to you?
Well, I mean, from the grant pop, from the grant perspective, I mean, how do they look at it? I, I was thinking about that, you know, cause. I look, you know, I'm just curious, does anybody know how that works or?
From the, from the grant perspective, they would rely on a very, um, uh. Very, uh, concrete cost estimate to start with, and that is even high on cost estimates.
Sure.
You know.
You know, I.
And then they need to, and then the applicant needs to prove their financial ability to finance that.
That's before it goes on. That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah, and you, and you'd get the same questions too, you know.
Sure, no.
Finance your portion.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's, I mean, kind of what I would think, you know, I was just sitting there thinking about it the other day, and I thought, you know. And I, and I'm confident, I mean, I wouldn't give these numbers and be here if I didn't think I could cover my part of it, you know, no problem there. But, you know, obviously, you know, we're up against the four oh eight main, well, you know, I've got two hundred and thirty thousand for our cost. I don't think three hundred and something's gonna touch that building, but.
Hope you're wrong.
Well, I don't know.
Well, quite, yeah, I don't know, there's just a lot of factors, you know.
Well, and I don't, I mean, I'm not a contractor either, but I know that.
You have a much bigger building.
Sure, right, but there's a lot of my building I don't have to do anything to.
Exactly, too.
You know, where that thing's gonna need the whole overhaul.
One of the concerns we have about the catalyst grant is cause part of your building is already done, so we need to really. Put as good a app as we can.
Right.
You know, especially, that's why the front was important to me.
Yep.
Um.
Well, and I took that into consideration, and that's why, you know, the, the new storefront. Um, with the potential for a new business, I thought would be appealing, and I think it is a big.
I think it is.
I think it's a big deal, you know, on that, and, um, so, you know, you're gonna get your housing and your storefront, which would be. You know, basically the same as the other building, other, except for the part that.
Right.
It's some still in use, you know, on the back and everything like that.
Right, you're exactly right.
Um, was my thought.
Especially that you're actually creating maybe two more.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah, and that's kinda what I was wondering, I, I don't know, as we were sitting down going through the numbers, and these are pretty solid numbers. I mean, these are, you know, these numbers that I have are, this, this'll get the job done, I mean, these aren't speculations, you know, this is where it's at, you know, and I thought. Boy, you know, you get into much more than that, you know, you could be talking quite a bit of money, it's quite the undertaking on some of that, but. So.
I think the apartments, I have no idea what anybody gets for apartments uptown, I have no idea. But I thought in Woodbine, all their renovated apartments that they had done, weren't they like? Four fifty to seven hundred or something like that?
I, I think that's what they said.
I think so.
No kidding?
Yeah.
And that was Woodbine?
Seems high, you probably, I mean.
But it depends on what the apartment's like.
Sure, sure.
You're putting the washer and dryers in there, and, and if you have a brand new total look, I mean, you pay for, you pay for though.
Yeah.
Well, like these houses in town, you know, they're rent like, like across street from, that's, that's, uh, close to nine hundred.
No kidding?
You're right.
But, that's your whole house, you had a garage and whole thing.
But there's duplexes that are renting for eight, nine hundred here.
I know, sure.
So, you know, I mean, it, rent is.
Just depends, so, like, you know, on that catalyst grant, though, would you tell me that household income has to be less than forty thousand? In order for the people to rent these apartments, is that right?
Not, not for the catalyst, for a lot of the other ones.
No, that was the other ones, okay, I know we talked about that.
Cause there's some other opportunities out there, but it restricts.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it makes it lower modern income.
Right, right.
Which is not at all a bad thing, cause this will still qualify most anybody who wants to live in an apartment.
Sure, I guess I was figuring my numbers kind of on, um, around the four hundred. So when I sat down and I figured everything up, you know, and what my rent would generate, I did four hundred, four hundred and four fifty. Four fifty for the two bedroom apartment, four hundred for the other ones, kinda figured in what my cost was gonna be, you know. Um, what the, the, another storefront, I was ballparking a little bit, you know, and what I could get for rent on a storefront, the fitness center. And then I included her salon grant, we own it, you know, but it's still, you know, what potentially could generate for income. And, you know, um, it'll pay for itself, I think, that if everything goes forward with it, you know, and I. And that's kind of important, I mean, uh, and to pay for itself, not only in, you know, the money that you borrow, but the extra insurance, you know, insurance is gonna double on this. I've already talked to him about that, uh, and, you know, a little bit. And, you know, a little bit of upkeep, I, I mean, I don't know, I hope there's not a lot of upkeep at first, but. I keep looking at you, 'cause I know it, you know, but.
You don't wanna hear all that.
No, not yet.
I'll tell you what, it's, it could be a real picnic.
And I'm sure of that.
You know, if you, if, it won't be much, I'm sure, but you know, if you offer that storage space, individual storage space to those occupants of those, you can even say, hey, Ken, I'm gonna want this much more if you want a storage space.
Right.
Assigned to you, you know.
That could be their area.
I think when you got brand-new, I think when it's brand-new, people are gonna pay more for it. I do too, I do too.
I, I mean, and.
And in part, and looking nice, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and everything, all the materials, I mean, that we listed, they're not high-end, but they're not bottom of the barrel either. They're kinda what, your commercial grade, that still looks nice, you know, um, and that's basically, you know, your flooring, your trim, you know, that kinda stuff.
Your cupboards, like what kind of are you?
Just, you've got standard wooden cupboards, um, kind of a, they're not custom or anything like that, they all kinda come as a kit now, you can buy like a kitchen, basically. As long as you got a corner to put it in with this much and this much, it'll fill you in, you know, pretty much, and the countertops will, will fit to suit. I mean, yeah, it's, it's a, it'll should be nice, I mean, you know, and washer and dryer in every unit, you know, that, like, I mean, that's definitely a perk, I think, too, and a selling point.
Yes, it is.
You can keep that, you know, that's worth a lot, I remember, I, we lived in an apartment, uh, down in Ankeny, and we had to go downstairs, you know, and granted, we were in college, you know, I think I wore like one shirt a day, or a week, but. It was quite the undertaking.
You didn't wanna go do your laundry, did you?
Oh, I mean, that's seventy-five cents, you know, it's like, geez, we'll air dry this.
You majored in economics, buy three pictures, get the fourth one for you.
Exactly, exactly, so, I mean.
Well, this looks good, you've got a lot of information.
Yep.
Already gathered, and you put a lot of work into it, it shows.
Right, right, and, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I just tried to cover everything, but if you're gonna, I worked for a contractor for ten years in the winter time when I was working down a tile plant. Um, we'd get laid off in the winter time, and I would do this remodel stuff, and I just know, you know, it's not as easy as what you think it's gonna be. Every time you've taken, you know, undergo a project, you know, everybody thinks they can just walk into something, slap it together, and even the construction, you know, being the manager, you know, quote-unquote on it, where you're just trying to coordinate plumbers with electricians, with flooring guys, and everything's gotta click, and, you know, it can be disastrous if somebody doesn't do their part, and that's why I wanted to do this, I mean, there's so, always so many unknowns on them old buildings and.
I know that you and Carla talked a little bit about the asbestos, did you give that more thought?
Yeah, I did, so, I tried to get ahold of, uh, Randy, and I was unsuccessful on that, and I have the, I have another contact, I don't have an appointment yet, but I do have a contact coming in. And I had a non-asbestos contractors kinda look at it and give me their thoughts, just, and they, they won't count, but I mean, I just said, you think there's any asbestos in here? When they walk through the building and I agree with them, I have plaster and lath and I have wood floor, I don't have, you know, the tile floor, you know, or anything like that, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue, honestly, I don't have any plumbing. So there's no, you know, they used to wrap the, um, the pipes and sewer pipes and stuff, there's none of that up there, I honestly don't think I'm gonna have anything in that portion of the building.
Didn't she think some of the facade was?
The facade on the outside of the building, she thought could be, um, it could either be that or it could be asphalt, depending on the date that it went, yep. And that, and I'll have them look at that, you know, and the whole project, you know, uh, when we get them there, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, I guess without saying, yes, I had a professional in there, I mean, we're pretty confident that that's not gonna hold up the progress or the project anyways, so.
Yeah, I guess I had to tell you that I did get ahold of Randy.
Oh, you did?
About, about doing some inspections, so we were talking, and I was talking both your building and, and our four oh eight Main building.
Oh, perfect.
And he's giving me some prices on, on, uh, on the inspection part of it.
Just doing the inspections? Well, and that was what, um, I was going through this thing here also, um, now this, the bottom here where it says city hires architect to prepare pre- preliminary plans. I mean, that's, is that basically what I've got here, I mean, is, you guys, would you guys bring somebody in to try to change all this, I mean, if this were to go forth, or is that, I mean, it says suggestion, I guess, but.
Yeah, I'd say, that was just my.
Sure.
It's just my suggestion, and it's not a commitment from the city.
No, I understand that.
But it is, it is the notion that, and, that, you know, a good set of plans and all of the graphics depictions to go along with it, that goes a long ways.
Right.
But you have a lot of that, so.
Right, right, yeah, and I mean.
What I, you know, there are some people that we would wanna talk with, associated with the grant, to say, you know, we have this, this information, is this the detail that you are looking for?
Sure, sure.
And, and if they say, yep, we're good to go, then we'd be good, if, if not, we'd be, could potentially be looking at some other.
Well, the other reason I ask is because, you know, any changes, you know, is gonna require a little bit, I, I wanna be as accurate as possible on the cost, you know, so, if we were gonna have somebody come in and, you know, say, we should do this, this, and this, then, you know, kind of, you know, on timeline perspective, you got some.
I don't, I don't think that's the idea.
Okay, I know we don't.
I think it's, it's what, they want the plan from you, you know, but, you know, maybe some people don't have the ability to do this, or, you know.
Sure, well.
So that was.
That way you can bring somebody in.
To prepare for the pre-application for the grant, I think we got what we need.
Right.
I really do, and then if they will, they very well may have some suggestions about how you prepare to get a really good full, full.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I don't, they're, they're not interested in changing your plan, I don't think, they might just make like a change.
And we got, we've been taking pictures of the upstairs and stuff, I knew we talked a little bit about that, if that goes forth, and I told her to take a bunch of pictures before people haul stuff out, it looks a lot worse when it's full of stuff. So, we did all that, you know.
He didn't like my Facebook post.
I wasn't a fan of that.
I almost had to take it off.
Yeah, and I wanted, I told, I mean, I just wanted to make sure to have as bad a pictures as possible, I guess.
Get the pictures of the basement.
Yeah, I, yeah, we need to, we need to down there and all.
That is the truth, they want, they want a building that doesn't look very good, and, you know, that it's gonna improve the downtown area and be a catalyst for.
Right.
Business traffic, more people living there, so, that's kinda the purpose of it.
Sure.
Yeah, we're really getting to the point now where we, we have a couple things on the agenda to take action on, which would be to choose a purchaser for four oh eight Main Street, and then also to choose a, uh, the business with which we would work on the catalyst grant, you know, other thing that, that I had asked the council for is, is permission to get, uh, Randy on board to do the asbestos inspections.
Well, I think we should.
And, uh.
So the city, we will pay for the inspections, both at four oh eight Main and the.
That would be my suggestion, I tell you.
What is your address?
Uh, four oh four.
Do you need a motion for that?
And four oh six, no, four oh four, oh, four oh two.
I'll, I'll make the motion if you do that.
Well, we got two of them, you know, the resort and the.
Inspections.
Okay, Mulder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Stank.
Yes. We'll start.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of the asbestos inspection, okay?
Okay.
Now we need somebody to have a motion to where's catalyst grant we're gonna apply for, where's Billy?
I'll make the motion to.
For two oh eight.
For the more, for the more project?
For the more probably, I'll second it.
We'll call.
Stank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thanks for everything you've done.
Yeah, thank you, we're excited, we are.
I think it'd be a fun project. Scott will be busy.
We're excited, so we just wanna do everything we can to get the best app we can, and we wanna get you that money.
I hope so.
We got the, we got this process, it's gonna move along rather quickly for the first steps.
Right.
So, I, I mean, okay, Scott, need something else from you guys?
Yep.
Yeah.
I understand, there's a timeline, you know what I'm saying, so, yeah.
And Carla will be helpful as, down the road as we go.
Right, right, I, I mean, she seems like she's gonna be really easy to work with, you know, on all that, that was.
She's gonna work with, then she knows what she's talking about.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's definitely, I look forward to it, hopefully we can figure, I mean, I don't, you know, in my back of my head, I thought, you know, I understand the four oh eight Main, you know, trying to wanna do something with that building and everything like that, but it's pretty large undertaking, I think, with that, so.
Well, it, you know, if we could've done two, we.
Right, 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 well, and maybe there'll be funding for next year or something too.
Well, we'll see, we have a plan, so we'll see how it goes.
Now we need to entertain a motion to go into a development agreement with the purchaser of four oh eight.
I'll make the motion that we go into with it with Eve Carroll for the four oh eight property.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Stank.
Yes.
I was waiting for Sunday afternoon.
Yeah, well, thank you guys.
Thanks for making the motion up, all right.
Hey, that's all right, I told Kelly, I said, I don't know what they're doing, but it's gonna either be good or bad, it's the government.
It always takes longer than.
They have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, second?
I'll second.
All right.
We're excited, we're excited to see Main Street come to life.
I hope it'll work for everything.